Sister, you salute?
I'll go ahead and call a meeting to order. Let him turn that.
Oh, lights on, good job.
You guys had a chance to look at the minutes from last month's meeting?
Just finishing, yes.
Anybody got any questions about the minutes at this point? The one only thing I wanted to just, it's not a question, I just want to make this statement out. I did contact the State Board of Accounts. They come in and did our inspection after five years, charges $15,000. So they're going to let us make payments on the $10,000 one for the sewer plant over three years.
$292.
I offered to give them a sewer plant, they wouldn't take it. Anybody got any ask questions about that?
That's terrible. I can't believe that they can justify that amount to charge a small town.
How do you budget for that? You can't budget for that because you never know when it's going to, they're going to pop in on you.
Well, like I said, how do you justify that? That's just not right. That's a true blue gouge.
Got any questions, Scott?
Can I get you guys?
No, no, that's minutes. I'll make the motion, we accept the minutes from last month's meeting.
I'll second it.
Most have been made, proper second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say zing. Motion carried, thank you. This time I want to introduce Jeff Plaschke and Akatsia with Stellar Pathways Program. You got the floor.
All right, well, thank you, Jeffy Windsor. Jeff was technically going to take over the meeting because I'm a day off, but here I am. I was curious, I wanted to come to Greens Fork. So this is my first official visit to Greens Fork.
I'll mark that down in your diary.
That's not driving me.
Jeff told you we was having brownies, didn't he?
I know, I've, that just made it even better. Here, fine, you want me to stand up, how you want me to do this?
You can sit.
Okay, all right. So the Stellar Pathway Program, that's why we're here tonight. It is the newest program out of OKRA. It is an extension of like Stellar Communities, an extension of like the Help Program. Still designed to do some of the same things, but about building capacity and developing strategies for communities to help them improve their quality of place and in the long run, community vitality, to keep your communities thriving. And so in the, in the long term though, it's really about how do we continue to collaborate as a county within our municipalities and at the same time between the key stakeholders and the county that we have been, that we've been working together, but we also want to bring on everyone else that also wants to participate with us. And so the Stellar Pathway Program, it is a program of, again, OKRA. It's $8 million and four of it is coming from OKRA directly and the other $4 million is a mix of six different agencies, Department of Health, Destination Development Corporation, et cetera. There are, we're working on a pretty tight timeline, which is why we're here tonight. We have to submit a letter of intent by May 1st. So this includes all the communities that want to participate with us, have to commit before that date so that we can put it into the letter and there's resolutions that are, that are coming along with it. If a community decides, hey, we don't want to do it right now and they try to come back to us, if we're selected as a finalist, we, OKRA's saying, nope, you cannot, you cannot join after the fact. Now, the process, because it's on a pretty tight timeline, May 1st is the deadline for us to submit all the information. In June is when OKRA will announce four finalists. The process started in early, late February, early March, when a group of individuals from Wayne County, representing the county, had to go to a two-day convening. We had to go to that first, even qualified to be able to submit a letter of intent. So Jeff led a team. I work for Ford Wayne County, but it's the community leadership arm of the Wayne County Foundation. So we had to go, where Lily told us to go those days, and Jeff went the other way for us to, to help us stay active in this process. In June, they will select four finalists. Of the four finalists, there will be some planning grant dollars that are awarded to those four finalists. There's a planning stage that goes from June to beginning of November, at which, at which point we have to submit a strategic investment plan with projects that arise from each community that participates. There's a presentation then in December to OKRA, and in January 2025, they will announce two designees. The two designees will then be eligible to apply for $8 million apiece, depending on what funding streams you're going after. So that's why we're working on a very fast timeline, just like anything with OKRA, it's never a long process, it's kind of, kind of a fast process. So we're here tonight to see if Greens Fork wants to participate with us. In this process, after the county meeting where we had to go to the two-day workshop from OKRA, the next step was we called a meeting at the foundation with all municipalities that were interested in participating. Greens Fork didn't initially attend that, but Buddy called me the next day and said, hey, we missed that meeting, but can we still at least have a conversation? So he and I met, kind of like, like, you know about what was going on with the program. I believe he has either printed out or emailed you all, yes, I see that you have some of that. So one was the actual presentation that came out of OKRA for Stellar Pathway. The second were all the FAQs that talked about the different funding streams, who can participate, who can't, who's eligible, who's not eligible, and all the, all the in-between. And then the second was a draft resolution. So we wanted to make sure that everyone had that information before we came to the, to the meetings, that would at least give you some time to at least kind of look through those kind of things. So we are here tonight to see if Greens Fork does want to participate.
When you say commit, what do we commit?
So, great question. I forgot that piece, and that's probably one of the most important pieces. At this point, in this program for Stellar Pathway, there is no financial commitment at this point. The financial commitment comes if we are awarded as a designee and we start applying for funding. Every program, just like any other state program, there is a match requirement, depending on the agency and depending on what you're going after, it is sometimes 10 to 20, depending on the funding stream. You are not required to go after, well, any of the funding, but if you want to go through one of the processes, that's the match that you would be working with. You're not, you are also not required to go through all the funding streams.
Can you say 10 to 20%?
Yes, of the project, whatever the project costs. So if it was a $50,000 project you were looking at, it would be, you know, 10% of that $5,000 match. But again, that's, January 2025 is when we're even going to start worrying about match and what that looks like. So that, if there's no financial commitment, there is a commitment of time, because you have to be an active participant in the planning process. When we did the Help Program, we met initially every couple of weeks, and then after that it became monthly meeting, and to this day, we're still meeting monthly to talk about the projects that are going through the Help process. So we anticipate it might be a very similar process. The third piece of it is, so again, no financial commitment, it is a commitment of time through the planning, and then the third piece is, is that should you choose to participate, that Greens Fork would send a representative to the planning process that has authority to speak on behalf of Greens Fork. We would recommend that it's just not an everyday citizen, because then that's when, hey, we're going to start putting our own thoughts and procedures into the process. So it is someone who knows kind of what some of the priorities are for Greens Fork, et cetera. In the planning stages, similar to the Help Program, we will have community-wide meetings. So we will come into every community and we will talk about what are things that you want to see, what, maybe what's the wish list, what have you been thinking about for a long time and maybe just never had the funding for, what does that look? And through that planning process, there will be a set of priorities that come out of Greens Fork that will go into the strategic investment plan. It will go into that plan, but it also gives you an opportunity to have this set of documents so that Greens Fork, moving forward, you know, if one project isn't funded, that they might have something that comes down the road. So the commitment is time, that you're going to do it, and that you'll send a representative, but no financial commitment unless we are awarded as a designee and we start going after funding streams.
Unless?
Do what?
Unless we will be awarded.
Yes, unless.
And then?
It will depend on what the priorities are for Greens Fork and what funding stream you're seeking.
And who will make the decision of which priorities for which yet?
It will be, so what will happen is, whoever participates, we are forming what we're called the Stellar Council. So it will be the key leadership, I will be there, Jeff will be there, Economic Development Corporation of Wayne County, and then at least one representative from every community participating. So that team will start working through all of the priorities and strategies, and they will start making sure that there is hopefully some equitable distribution of priorities across and potentially funding.
When we had met, I had asked you, and I think I asked you several times about the money, because I complained to you that we are, and I say this every time, there's money involved, we are a very poor community, and you said that there were kind of waves around that.
Well, I mean, what I've been sharing with communities is that not to worry about the match at the moment until we need to worry about the match. And depending on the agency and depending on what the funding stream is, it's not always a monetary match that is required, like a hard cash.
Can the match come out of what you're going to be allotted?
Uh, no.
Cannot?
No, but it could be other ways, and that's why we would have to actually dig into each of those funding streams. So it could be in kind, it could be services, things that we can apply to the match. So it's not, I'm not, I'm not concerned at this point in time about any actual monetary funds until we know what each of those groups are looking at.
And what could the funding be used for?
It can be used for a whole variety of things. Marketing.
Sewer plant?
Firehouse.
It could be, you know, some of those things, yes, it could be used for all of those things.
It could be?
It could be, yes.
There's money, a million and a half dollars from Indax, so it could potentially be a paving project. I guess I would say, sorry to interrupt, but unlike Help, and, you know, we came to you and asked if you wanted to participate in Help, and you were not able to because you'd already committed all of your funding, I think probably for the sewer plant, but... And I understood that, because, you know, there was, there was a 30% commitment of the money that you got from ARPA to the plan that came out of the Help planning process. That is not the case with Stellar. The, the other significant difference is, you know, when we talked to you about, about Help, the county was prepared to and actually did spend about twice as much as, as we had to commit, and we have allocated some of those funds to the communities that participated to help them meet the match or make up the gap. That, I can't commit that that is going to happen with Stellar, because the ARPA money is essentially all gone, it's all committed. So what I will commit to, and the reason I think you should participate, is to have a plan come out of this process. It won't cost you anything except some of your time. There will be a plan that you all put together with help from us and from consultants that will be hired to, to help us with the overall planning process, that will identify the projects that your community wants to do going forward. We'll try to put some numbers to those, how much, how much will this cost, how much will that cost, and prioritize those things. What are the most important to you, what's the second most important, the third, and so on? From that, if we're successful and if we're selected, and there are 32 counties that are eligible to file a letter of intent, we think at least half of them will do that. So let's say 16 apply. Four will be selected as finalists, and if we're one of those four, then we go through this planning process, and of those four, two will be selected as what they call designees that'll have a pot of money committed to them for projects that meet all of the requirements that go along with spending these federal dollars.
Now, are they on top of this, they're watching what you're spending this money on?
Oh, absolutely. And you're going to be audited, and the federal government's going to be involved, and OKRA's going to be involved, and absolutely, they will tell you, yes, this fits, no, this does not, and this is why. So we can get into all of those details as we, as we move along, but as Akatsia said, what we really need from you tonight is, do you want to do it or not?
We need a commitment of time, man.
We need a commitment of your time, your work, your willingness to, to work with your own community and the county in general, to, to gather input from as many residents of Wayne County, and in your case, residents of Greens Fork, as we can. What do you aspire to? What do you want to see in Greens Fork? What are the highest priorities? And then, we will try to match funding streams with, not just yours, but everybody's, everybody's project list.
Just because we want it in a certain area doesn't mean we will get it in that area.
Because $8 million sounds like a lot.
It's a lot.
With Help, we're spending probably close to $12 million, and, and it still doesn't cover everything that people wanted to do. So we will work on it, we'll, we'll chip away at it. From my perspective, I absolutely want to ensure that every community that participates gets something, some level of funding from their list. It's, again, it's not a hard and fast commitment, it's Jeff's commitment that I will work to see that that happens, but I'm not the final decision maker, and part of it depends on, do you have in your list projects that fit these funding streams? And we'll talk in great depth about what the different funding streams can support.
But only down to two, two communities?
Two counties.
Two counties.
Across the state.
Not, yeah, not two communities in Wayne County, but two counties in the state of Indiana will be selected.
Sir, one of the things that we really need is a new firehouse, and Buddy's Clay Township Fire Department, will that work? That's what we need.
They're not going to spend, they're not going to spend a million dollars on Greens Fork, we're going to get a fire department, that's not realistic.
Not if we only have $4 million from the whole county of, of Community Development Block Grant.
But if he got like...
We don't need anything else but a fire station?
We need lots of help at this sewer plant.
Streets.
We've got to have a new firehouse.
Right, but, but what I'm saying, like streets, sidewalks, park equipment, you want something next door here, you just want to get concrete work done for, for a park, those kind of things is what, is what they're talking about.
We don't have Park Committee or anything in that, we would get involved with...
But for Greens Fork, it's going to be a smaller chunk of it, like 50 grand, 75 grand, a project like that.
And any chunk is better than no chunk.
Right, and you're only going to pay 10% or 15 or 20% of that, so something that would benefit Greens Fork. Paying always benefits Greens Fork. Paying always comes up, that's one, one, one aspect.
I've said for years, I would love to see a park for these kids, to have someplace to go and do something.
Be wonderful.
All right, so they've got a, kind of got a park at the community center, or it's private.
Yeah, kind of.
Well, I think, so I think that back to what Jeff was saying, there's a couple of things you need to look at. Right now, you're, you're just in this room kind of having those conversations. When you actually go through the planning process, you invite as many community members, whether that goes through a utility bill, whether it's just a direct mailing from Greens Fork, direct to decisions, but they'll be invited to a meeting where you will hear not just what's in this room, but you will hear what they want to see. So could it be a park, potentially? Do they want lights, new lights? That could be it. Is it sidewalks?
Oh, yeah.
That could be it. It could be, it could be any one of those things, but that's where the conversations come, is from the community members to say, this is what we would like to see. So I wouldn't get hung up on just something right now.
Yeah, exactly.
And, and the other part of that is, is you're right, you're not guaranteed any funding, but I will say, you are guaranteed no funding if you don't choose to participate.
Absolutely. If you, if you're not in the program, now...
You can't even think, yeah, you can't go to...
You can't even think about it.
But who has, who has time?
But if, if you get in the program, down the road, you can drop out, right?
We'll find somebody.
I'm not.
We don't have to have just one person, we can have like two, three.
Participate in the program now.
Yes, your choosing, tonight's vote is whether you're even going to choose to participate in the program.
And then, when it comes up to funding, or something like that, if they don't have the funding, they could probably drop out of it.
Well, you have to drop out, it'll just be like, you'll still have your plan, but that doesn't mean when other streams come down the road, that we would just kind of out of the pack.
Okay. But the biggest thing is to get in the program.
Two designees to attend these meetings, and one can't make it up.
It doesn't have to be the same person for every...
Yeah, it doesn't have to be the same person, but...
We could figure it out.
But there should be communication between the designees about what has happened from one meeting to the next.
And with all of you.
And, yes.
You guys need to know where we're at, what are the next steps, how can you be involved? Because everybody in this room certainly will need to be involved at one time or another. Not, not for every meeting, but when we're gathering community information, you all need to be there. You need to participate, you need to share your ideas, and you need to hear what your citizens want.
And there, when we did the Help Program, there were other communities that had members of the planning team that worked full-time, and we just zoomed them in. So sometimes they can be directly in the room, and sometimes it's via Zoom, it's always better when you're in the room, but we wouldn't let, I mean, the technology, we're not going to let that hinder the planning.
It has these meetings app.
Probably the foundation.
And that is where?
I know where that's at now, I walk through.
Yeah, Buddy said, where's the foundation? I said, walk out your door and just go one block east.
Go east, you'll see it. I was like, oh, okay. Hey Buddy, on this right here, this is different than last time. You know, last time, there was pros and cons, but I don't really see any cons as far as joining, because there's, there's no money out of pocket right now, and it gives you time to, you guys come up with a game plan on, on different things that you guys like, and it's also a two-way street. The more communities that they get involved in this whole process, the better chances that our county has, because that's going to weigh in, like Greens Fork, our, our income, they all look at that when they decide where this money goes. They're trying to figure out who needs it. It's not who's got the best program out there, but who needs it the most. And boy, if they're basing on Greens Fork, we'd be having all kinds of grants fly his way, but this is just totally different than, than the last program. I think this right here is going to be, even if you only do something real small, you only go pay a 10 or 20%, you know, two years from now, and, I mean, that's just, that's as much, that's as money as you have. You'll loan us a little bit of that if we need it, though, right?
Of course, you might. If you put him on a payment plan.
Is this for like, you know, hiring more police or anything like that?
You can't use it on, I was going to say that, you can't use it on personnel. It's not going to matter what the agency is.
We can always sell LPRs and get money if we need it.
Personnel.
Yeah, I was telling him about license labor, we can get something by the dozen, but, you know, getting a vehicle to put it on, or a bicycle or something, but...
I just, I really think there is virtually no downside to participating in this. Hagerstown and Centerville, who also along with you did not participate in Help, have already committed to participating in this, they, they see the, the possibilities here. And the thing that you absolutely will get out of this as we go through the process, hopefully will be named as a finalist at the very minimum, will be a plan. What, what do the folks in Greens Fork think you need? What do they want? And, and you all as leaders need to know that, and they need to know what you think.
Going back to the original intent, Stellar Pathway, it is about building capacity, creating strategies for quality of place and community vitality. That is the ultimate goal of Stellar Pathway. So if you, and Buddy and I had this conversation, again, we, we see no downside to it at this point in time, but the downside is, is we choose not to participate, and you're like, man, can we do it later? We can. I mean, with Help, we had a little bit of wiggle room. OKRA's made it pretty clear that there will be no additions after finalists are announced.
We're down to two counties, correct? That's the final?
So in June, we will know.
What the two counties are.
Nope, in June, we will know if we are one of the four finalists that go through the planning process.
Okay.
Two will be first of next year.
In January 2025, we are the two designees of those four finalists.
And those are counties?
Correct.
And of that's...
OKRA calls them regions, but that means county in their world. Doesn't have to make any sense.
Of those two counties, how many towns can get involved in that, and how does that get chosen?
Well, that's what we're doing right now.
We're inviting everybody, every town.
So the municipalities had to come to a meeting, that was step one.
You misunderstood my question. We're down to two counties at the very end.
It's whoever chooses to, like, Greens Fork tonight chooses to participate, they're in, because they've been part of the planning process. No one gets added after May 1st.
If you choose not to, you're out.
So it doesn't many, matter if you are in the plan and we're down to the counties, the little towns that participated are in?
That participated, yeah.
Okay.
Right, but that doesn't mean that they're, that they're, that like your particular project is going to be approved, but you get a pretty good chance, if you got the right dollar amount and the right stream to go after, that, that there's going to be something coming our way.
Okay.
Is that right?
Yes. We're, we're guessing that there'll be seven or eight municipalities that participate of the 14 in Wayne County.
And they have to be incorporated or no?
Yes.
They do have to be incorporated, correct? And we are.
So the first part of this is that we need a vote, whether you want to participate or not. If you choose to participate, then we're also asking, and I think Buddy and everyone has a copy of this as well, is the copy of the resolution. It's really basic, the only thing we're asking to prove...
They may not have a copy of that, but I think Nida's got a copy of it.
Okay, so the second part of this is not, is...
It was an email. It was an email to us.
There is a second piece of this, there is a draft resolution, Jeff actually brought a copy of it. It's very basic, it, what it says is that we're committing to participating, we're going to commit the time, we're going to go through the planning process. We're asking for pre-approval of this resolution. The only thing of this resolution that will change is on April 17th, we will know the final list of communities that will be participating. So at the very top of the resolution is all that it says, example, communities or municipalities participating, that's where all of the towns will go that are participating. We won't know that final list until April 16th, which is our last town council meeting that we have to attend, who showed interest. And then on 17th, so what will be is that top part will, will just be the final list of communities, there is a line where it will say Town of Greens Fork, and then there will be one that says Stellar Wayne County, which is what the county has called, is calling itself, Stellar Wayne County. The only, so we're asking for one, a vote to see if you want to participate, if that is a yes, that passes that, saying pre-approval of this resolution. Pre-approval, because once we know the final list, then you can sign the resolution. But we can't have you sign something if we don't know who the final communities are until that date.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we take it to a vote.
I'll second that.
I got a question. So we did for sure have somebody that's going to be able to go do this?
We'll get somebody.
You're good with that? Then, okay.
Who's good with it? We're going to pay him, he's going to...
That's right.
He'll go pay you.
And when we, and you don't know when these meetings are, so should, and if you want to just stop in and kind of listen, come on?
What time, what times are the meetings anyways?
We haven't even established that yet. We have to wait until we know who's coming, look at those schedules, and then select a time.
What'd you say, Nita?
Don't they need his email address?
Not, not at the moment. I know, I now know how to find Buddy, I know how to find you. I now know where Greens Fork Town, Town City Building is.
Just live right down the street.
Then I will, you know, that we don't have to worry about.
Pretty easy, fine.
Motion's been made and proper seconded to take it to vote. All in favor of going with the program, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say the same. Motion carried, so we will commit to that.
Okay, so second vote then tonight we need is approval of the draft resolution pending, well, approval of the draft... Pending, well, approval of the draft resolution with a modification on the seventeenth, people know the list of final communities. And then Buddy can sign it as you were.
You know when we say all that in one breath, do you?
Well, I can't, I mean, I can't say it.
Well, you can say it, I go, "Yeah, what she said." We knew that a lot here.
All you're doing, Buddy, is approving the resolution subject to the final list of communities that are participating.
So I will make the motion that we approve the resolution pending final.
List of communities.
Approval.
List of communities.
List of communities, yeah, that's what it was.
Cue card, please.
I'll second that. Thank you. Motion made, properly seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say the same. Motion carried.
So a motion to approve resolution pending final list of communities.
Sure.
And you made the motion?
And that would be...
And Scott seconded?
And that would be a resolution number, would that be one of the resolution, on behalf?
That would be number three.
Three?
I guess for us, would it be our resolution number?
Yes, yes it would.
Three dash twenty twenty-four?
It'd be two oh two four dash oh three.
So, one, we're excited to have you on board. In the email that was probably forwarded to you, you have my contact information, so if you have, yeah, I wish I would've asked that question. Feel free to reach out, give us a call, and we will kind of go from there. All right. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thanks for showing up.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah, thank you.
Better get a brownie, folks.
Right up there, get one. Oh, there's a banana there, too. You might have to fight Doug for that.
Doug wants to keep his fat.
I may need that.
You want a plate?
Thank you. I'm good. Thank you very much.
Rick, Kathy, I want you to pass nothing plates.
She don't like the looks of them plates.
No, I can't stand the texture.
Yeah, they are different.
Thank you so much.
He's filming us eating brownies.
Thank you.
I should've told him you killed it.
If you want to, if you want a brownie, let me know, I'll be...
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Gee, Rick, I want you to move here so you can take this seat over. You say, Mike, you think, oh, never mind, we're okay, we're still, we're two cars away. Okay then, very good.
Do we have to sign this, Buddy?
Oh, resolution, yeah.
Take that right now.
You gotta wait till the list comes out, then you'll sign that one?
Yeah, it's pre-approved, if it comes up, then we need to be on there. Yeah, that's just, that's minutes.
Okay. Bud, would you get me a pen, please?
Were they saying, Buddy, four million or eight million?
Said eight million.
Eight million, split between two counties, so four million for the county.
All right, and then, and then, so four million goes into county, what?
And then it's split up.
So your bigger projects out of Richmond and Wayne County per se will be the biggest portion of that. Hopefully, we'll get some of...
What that's gonna be is whoever the representative, it sounds like it's gonna be me or Doug, or me and Doug, are gonna just have to sell our, we're gonna have to come sell them, to sell our ideals.
Our blood.
When I think of it, I think of, I know we're gonna have to tear up South Main Street before we pave it, and we're gonna have to rent equipment to do that, and I mean, that's, that's gonna be forty or fifty thousand out of our, with us doing it. So I'm sure there's plenty of things that we will discuss on what we want to take before we go from there. Okay, anybody got any questions of what just happened? Brenda? You got a cackling over there, you got any questions, Brenda?
I don't think so, but they did a nice job of explaining it.
Explain it, let's see.
It does sound better than the last time, though.
Well, it seems like the last time, was that EDC?
Yes.
Yeah. That didn't work well for them or us.
And even if we have to come up with a match, we're still gonna have to, if we don't have any grant monies, we're still gonna have to spend money for some of the repairs that we need.
Exactly. And she had said too, it was a little confusing when she said in-kind instead of...
So labor?
Labor.
So you got in-kind, so if...
Like our equipment to pay?
We are doing the work, we're doing a lot of the labor involved.
Gotcha.
The labor, that can be added into the in-kind match.
All right.
At least that's my understanding of this.
That's the way it was with the flight.
The flight, right.
And the Wayne County Foundation thing, that we got money from them or something, and we had to...
We got money for...
They are the one that gave us ten grand that time, if I'm not mistaken, one, Wayne County.
For our, um, re-qualification, whatever was the book.
Re-qualification.
Yeah.
Is that how much it was, ten grand to me?
No, it wasn't quite ten.
It was up there.
Took the extra, had a big part of you, we didn't watch you, so we figured you'd make a little.
I'd turn you in, I'd turn you in to IRS.
All right, next on the agenda is Police Report, Officer Bush.
So, uh, I got Brian's for in. Brian completed the State Police IDAX testing and certification, and then Brian also signed the town's computer security stuff, and the nepotism folders up there.
Okay, I was wondering where it was at.
So he got that done. The first LPR came in, and Brenda is working on a procedure for making payments of the installment, so I think she's, she's putting a check in the mail today. I just emailed the guy to let him know that the check's on the way, and then...
Check's in the mail?
Yeah, and then, you guys figure like, maybe like ten days, it should be cleared, the process, the bank, by about ten days, that, that's about right? Two weeks, I guess?
Yeah, sometimes.
In the two weeks, we'll have to get up, just get, all we need is a copy of the check clearing, and then I'll, I'll download that to the, to the state's website, and then...
We'll need to go to the bank and get that, because we didn't normally get it back for a long time, so...
Right, oh yeah, we, we don't, we don't delay, but just whenever we can. And then Adam from, from the Jag administration, he said that he'll push that through pretty quick, and then he'd get it, write the positive, write back to us electronically, so...
Let's just complete the three required reports for the first quarter.
So every quarter, there's three different reports that we have to do for, for each quarter. So the first quarter ended March thirty, March thirtieth, and so I had to go online, and there, there's nothing been done, because we haven't spent any money yet, so it was pretty easy to do. But then like next quarter, however much money we spend of it, we'll, that we'll have to highlight that.
Are you handling those reports?
Yeah. Actually, me and Ron, because you gotta have two people do it, you know, for, for quality control.
Checks and balances.
Yes. Got the new twenty twenty-four inventory for the insurance, got that to Anita, and then we've done a lot of preparation for the ECLIS.
What kind of preparation? I'm interested in hearing this.
So, so basically what happened, so, well, what we all know now is a big nothing burger, right? But here's the deal, it's because the county put a lot of time and effort in coming up with a nice plan. Our plan was, it was, it was really kick-ass, to be honest with you. I mean, I seen one of the Henry County done, and other counties, and it's like, no, we had a plan. But, and it worked out pretty good, there's a lot, there's, everybody was staffed out, DOT was on duty that day. The, the, uh, street department in Richmond, sanitation, parks department, I mean, they were all working that day. And, but, you know, everybody's wondering, well, what happened with the, you know, these massive crowds that were going?
And the traffic, we didn't see any of that.
Well, I figured out going home why that was, and I go, why didn't we even think about this?
Thirteen states.
Because if you look at the path, the path of that thing was, it comes right straight across central Indiana, right? Going to Ohio, right? Well, nobody from Ohio needs to come to Indiana when they can go right in the center of their state and do what they gotta do, which is exactly what happened. All your traffic was from north and south, from Louisville, Chicago, that's where it was all at. It was on sixty-five North, it was jam-packed all the way Lafayette. And traffic was still jacked up at ten, eleven o'clock at night.
Did you get out to the fairgrounds, man, and chase?
I did not go by there, but I was in dispatch the, the weekend before, and they'd already started canceling the concert, because people weren't showing up. The crowds did not materialize like they, and that's fine, but we planned for it. That's the thing. That's why I call it a nothing burger, is because the plan was gone through so thoroughly.
It was over the top.
Yeah, it was over the top, it was, it was over preparation, and it worked out great for us.
It was a private entity anyway.
But if we hadn't of, it would've went sideways.
Yes.
Oh, well, all you gotta do is look over there at the, you know, on the northwest side of Indianapolis. Everything was jacked up. I mean, they had four sixty-five was just parking lot, so it was, for us, it worked out pretty good, and the weather, what, and the weather, the weather really played a big factor, too, because everyone thought the clouds was gonna, you know, do, you know, do, do this and that, and actually, the clouds really didn't clear up until it was kind of almost close to showtime, so...
I thought it was clear pretty much the whole afternoon.
We had a little bit of clouds, but we could sure see it.
And like I said, I think it worked out great, the county and the EMA really, EMA is what really was the driving force behind it, and they really just went after it real strong. You know, we had the Sheriff's Department, RPD, everyone bought into it months ago when we started having these meetings, you know, and it worked out pretty good, so, worked out pretty good.
It was good training for a future.
It's, it's, yeah, for any type of, you know, major event, like, you know, say Greens Fork gets a grant, you know, in this process, we just, we signed up for, you know, that kind of event.
Okay then.
Anybody have any questions for Rick?
Did the, uh, LPR get installed already then?
No, 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 no. Because there's, there's another one that we gotta buy when this money gets, gets reimbursed, and then they're gonna come and attach them. It, it'll just be a one-day install for both of them.
They're gonna be put on both cars, correct?
Yes.
They're gonna be mounted on the truck?
Yes.
Correct.
Two, two on one side, facing different directions, and then one on the other side, facing forward to, like, get parked cars. Um, I didn't put on, on this report. What'd you say?
I said this is the high-tech redneck police force.
There you go.
That's where you are.
Something that, that, what's his name was there earlier about, he was, Kyle has, has stopped by, and he was talking about... Talking about, okay, never mind.
We'll get to that.
But, that's pretty much it?
I make a motion, make a sub, police report.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made, properly seconded, you accept Officer Bush's police report, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say the same. Motion carried, thank you, Rick. Me and Rick brought it up, I'm gonna go ahead and address this letter from Kyle. He's got his little letter here. Says President Strunk and board members. I'm a resident of eleven Maple Street, Kyle George, got his phone number here, got his email. Uh, over the summer and through the winter, I have noticed more and more abandoned vehicles, unkempt yards with junk, and generally not maintained properties in our town. I am pretty certain that our town has ordinances about all these items. Is it possible to begin to enforce the ordinances that are in place? I understand we are just coming out of winter, many of the properties have not been mowed yet this year. I hope that we, as Greens Fork, can still, can instill a little bit of pride and ownership back into our community. I too have attached some information regarding the burning concerns. I would love to discuss these in, if, in further, if possible. Well, first thing that community members need to know is that we meet the second Thursday of the month, every month, seven PM. They've all are welcome to come, they've all been encouraged to come. I know he may be a busy, busy man, but to me, writing, anybody can write a letter, sit there and look me in the eye and talk to us. That's the way I would like to see it done. So anybody else want to comment on this, please do. What you got on, Rick?
I'm gonna, uh, it's springtime again, so I'm gonna be, be putting the letter up there at the post office again about, about junk vehicles. The RB that several people have questioned about, that is gonna be addressed with them. They either need to give me a, an idea of what their plans are, or show me that it's functional.
It's not functional.
I know, but what I'm saying, I'm gonna give them that option, because I don't wanna go over there and try to heavy-handed on someone's property. I try to avoid doing that, but, but he is right, though. We, we gotta order someplace, and I don't really get involved until somebody complains, and then I'm forced to get involved, and that's what I'm gonna have to do.
What's the deal with the end of the street on North Green and their fencing?
End of the street?
Uh, the fence looks like it's up all the way across on the right side of it, so...
North Green.
How about Jeffers down there, right?
No.
Who's, who's got, who's got, who's got?
Thomas.
Who's that?
Next door to my mom's place, that used to be my mother's place, on North Green.
Yeah, I, I know, I had a fence problem.
That's who we're talking about, Randy.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Randy Thomas.
Oh, oh, is that her name? Okay, I didn't know who.
So the fencing is partially up?
To me, it loo, it looks a whole lot better. I mean, can you guys, you guys see it by the fire department? You don't see it? So, I mean, they went and they done what they said, it took them a long time, but we finally gonna get it up, and I think it does look a lot better back here, because you see the fence, and for, for most part, and you don't, you know, you don't see all the other cars and stuff that are back there, so it is an improvement. But you guys can tell me, when you guys go by and look at it, if it's not good enough, then, then we can address that.
I just wondered where we stood with it, whether you, you, was she in compliance with what you asked her to do?
To me, it does, to me, to me, because she took a lot of action, she put up, I don't know, looks like maybe like six panels, maybe, that were...
Maybe a few more.
Yeah, but it, it goes, there's a small opening onto the left where cars can go in and out, and she's got a fence up the rest of it.
Bring me up to date on vehicles and how you, they're in trouble. What, what hap, what, where, what stage are we at that they are in trouble? If they're parked on the street and aren't licensed?
No, no, that's a, that's immediate, they gotta get it off the street, it's gonna have plates on it.
Okay, if it's parked on the street and doesn't run?
Well, no, it can't be on the street. When someone tells me that, I usually go up and say, hey, is your veh, just like the, the truck that was parked there on Main Street on the south side. If it's not, they pushed it, I guess they pushed it in the driveway.
I wonder, because it's still in the driveway. Is it, it's not, does it run?
If it's not, if it's still not runnable, then that would be, then you go through the, the abandoned vehicle process. You go there and start, you start tagging them, but the thing is, though, is that when you start doing them, then we, then we need to do the other people as well, because we can't just single out.
And what about just parking a vehicle that doesn't run in your backyard? You can't do that.
You can't do that, but we try to give people the opportunity to say, hey, what are you gonna do with it? Are you gonna, are you gonna put a car, are you gonna put a starter on it? Are you gonna put a carburetor, whatever the case is? That's the kind of stuff, but if someone sees a car that they think is not, that is questionable, they need to let me know, and I'll go ask them.
What does the ordinance say? That's what you have to do, what the ordinance said. It's wrote somewhere, it is written somewhere, where it has to be done. Now this, we wanna give them the benefit of the doubt, that's, the ordinance, none of our ordinances say, we're gonna leave it to their discretion and give them the benef, none of our ordinances say that. We have to start following it.
If you want me to follow the ordinance for the law, then say it.
Then why write them? Why are we writing them?
You, you tell me, they've been around longer than I've been here. If you want me to enforce it without, without any, without any type of thing, and just follow the law, then tell me that, and that's what I will do. If you don't want me to have any discretion...
We need to read that ordinance.
Yeah, no, no, Buddy's right, it says...
You know, and we ought, we do this every time. Any ordinance that we have, we go, well, poor lady or poor guy, you know, they having a little trouble with this or that, so, you know, somebody's not having trouble, is there two different ordinances? No, I mean, that, that's why the ordinances are wrote. Do you have to be like a, it don't always have to be the downside, and if, and if we can't do it that way, then we need to take... And if, and if we can't do it that way, then we need to take some extra meetings and rewrite some of these ordinances. Simple as that. Either follow them or rewrite them where you can follow them.
It's just been a while since I've read that ordinance and I'll have to get it out and read it. Yes.
Yeah, I think we've altered our ordinances, hold on.
Yes, sir.
Copies.
If not, I can, I got, I got the electronic version of it as well.
Oh.
Cause when they, when you spent that ten grand, I made sure that they get, that they gave us an electronic version so we could, so that those can be altered if you decide to.
And how many of these vehicles up here on the east end of Greensport, north side of the road, right where the new houses are, where the new houses start? How many right there are backed up into the fence don't run? I think there's three or four parked there.
Which one you talking about?
If you're going east out of town, you got the fire department and then you got the Christian church.
Oh, you're talking about that first modular house?
Yes.
He's got two or three vehicles there, but I constantly see him working on them, so. Like I said, if, you know, I don't have a problem starting knocking on any doors and asking people. But if you want me to follow the ordinance and say, hey, we want the abandoned vehicles taken care of, and that's what I'm gonna do.
But they got to be, for the ordinance, abandoned vehicles.
Right. Just because I see a vehicle parked, am I gonna ask everybody, hey?
Here's another thing. And you said something, something earlier come out. If a car is parked on the street, it has to run. If it's legally tagged and insured, does it have to run?
How am I gonna know that? I got five vehicles. All of mine run, but do I, just my truck and my, my Crown Vic, I haven't drove it.
Right.
Several months, but again, but that's why, that's why all them ordinances is based on officer discretion. That's why I was trying to get across to you. If you try to follow every single one by the law, then that was, that's gonna be pretty chaotic here.
But what you do for one, you have to do for all. That's what we run into.
So if I'm gonna start going after vehicles, then I, obviously, if there's a vehicle jacked up or you guys know of a vehicle that someone physically towed or had pushed, then that's, that's me, that'd be reasonable for me to go ask them, hey, what's going on with this?
Well, I could discussion about the truck that was out there. That truck was out there for five months with, with the place where it expired a year. So that was the whole deal there. Now, they pushed it in the driveway? Okay, I'm all right with that. If they pushed it or drove it or whatever.
Right.
It's all private property now. If it's all private property, does it have to be insured?
Nope.
Does it have to be plated?
Nope.
But it has to run.
It says operable, is what the law says operable. Again, so that's what I'm trying to say, that do you want me to go knock on the door and say, hey, you need to get out here and drive this car. I don't wanna see you move it.
What I think we should do, being this is coming up, cause springtime is coming, is I think we need to either have a special meeting or at our next meeting, we need to get that ordinance out, look at it and say, okay.
If everybody understands it.
Exactly. Everybody's on the same page and it's gonna be this way across the board. Cause that's what we hear more than anything. Well, that vehicle over there on the south side of town, it's been sitting there. You haven't said anything to them, but you come over here on the north side, you tell me I gotta move my.
Well, that's because I always go after, I always, yeah, I always tell her Kathy sent me.
Yep, she does. Yes, she does.
You oughta be ashamed.
But you know what though? I would never go after someone's car and then let somebody else slide. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
If, 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 if I was gonna, just like, you know, just like Kelsey's property. His, his, his place has kept up nice and straight and organized. If anyone's ever drove by there lately.
Yes, it is.
It's straightened up. Everything's nice and organized. Well, I'm saying, but am I gonna go there and say, well, that vehicle hasn't moved in years? You know what I'm saying? I try, you know, I try to stay out of people's business, but if there's a complaint, like the RV parked on thirty-eight, that, you know, that forces my hand, so, you know.
That RV on thirty-eight, is it on thirty-eight or is it in a yard on the thirty-eight?
No, it's in a yard. It's in a yard, but what I'm saying though, is that, he's right though. There is a, the, the state law or the ordinance, cause they're, they're kinda the same. It, it gives you a thing. Is it operable? Is that thing operable or not? If they can get in and start it and the tires are up, then it's gonna be an ugly eyesore. Ain't nothing I can do about it.
What if it's their, their, uh, campsite? Let's just say it's their camper. Can I park a car in my front yard and say, I'm gonna use this all summer, just, just I'm gonna go out there and I'm gonna sleep in it maybe and I'm gonna cook out there?
As long as it's operable, you can do what you want with it.
Operable for what?
Operable for what it was designed for, to drive down the road unassisted. I mean, anybody agree with that?
Well, I don't know.
If I tell you what operable is, then you have to go by the, the English dictionary and see what it says, what operable means.
Well, like I said, before we implement anything, we need to pull in.
But I am gonna put the thing at the post office, let them know that vehicles are.
Rick's gonna be on the prowl. You know what to do, you know.
No, they was, ah, it's springtime again. He's not doing, and we got some people to get, to do something with their vehicles. It worked.
Well, and if you see them pulling vehicles in their yard back to a corner, that's the number one. How many more are to come? That's where I'm at.
Right.
And I mean, I've got a neighbor that just pulled one back into the corner.
Oh, behind, behind you?
No. Now, what is your later gonna say that you're gonna post it? Will you give a copy of it?
Yeah, I'll give you a copy. It's gonna be, it'd be great. We can post it here at the town hall too, so.
Okay, good.
Like I said, I don't wanna be heavy-handed where I just go and say, hey, we're gonna start towing vehicles out of, you know.
Give them some warnings.
Give them some warnings. And then when I do, they can, they can come to, they come to meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, buddy.
Alrighty then. Let me see what else we got.
So I guess we'll have to stay on top of the eight, ten, twelve-inch grass and the debris and all the.
But you know what? I haven't cut my grass yet. I'm not understanding this, cause I know, I know, I tried to avoid cutting the first time as long as, I mean, kinda a lot of people do.
I tell you, right now, the grass, if you've got grass, it probably needs cut.
Mine probably does need cut, but I've been waiting for it to dry out.
Mine, my front wants and my back needs to be cut again.
Not once.
Yeah.
We have to.
But then again, I'm the type of guy that I mow about every four or five days anyway, whether it's for many.
You just like to mow.
It's my, my time. My personal time.
It's quiet time.
Once you come help me, I'll break you in half.
Okay.
You want me to, Kathy, when, uh, I'm out and about, or you want me to just start making a list of addresses where we see?
Yeah, probably should bring them to us so we can take a look in.
All right. We can start doing that, cause till, till letters start going out the first time, people kind of wait till the very last.
When are you planning on getting letters out? Before the next meeting, by the next meeting?
None, what letters out?
You, what you just said, before the letters start going out.
No, no, no.
Letter at the post office.
No, I'm doing the, the, talking about for vehicles or talking about for weeds? I'm just gonna get a list together. You guys, they can do what they want with it. I wasn't gonna say anything to people about that. You know, it's, it is kinda rough when you go to someone's door with a handgun. Hey, I think this grass they cut. I mean, I mean, come on.
Especially in this town, I'd be careful going, somebody's going with the handgun, cause they probably got one too.
Oh, I'm sure of that.
Back to the letter that we received, a little bit of pride and ownership back into our community. You can't force these people to do something they don't wanna do.
And then.
And they don't care.
It's a good statement, but the problem is, over the years, Kyle's lived here all his life. His parents raised him here. The people that lived here all their life, you can see they take care of their property. But so many people have moved on. They've still got the properties and are renting them for astronomical amounts. They're making killings off of it. So the people that rent it, you know, they're sitting there saying, man, I'm paying seven hundred fifty dollars a month for this house. It's not even mine. I don't care if it, it needs power washed. Not my house. I don't care if the grass gets mowed. Not my house. That's what you run into and it's a shame, but it's just.
But that's not, that's not just Greensport.
Oh, no, that's everywhere.
Where I live at, Indianapolis, Richmond, it's, it's kind of all the same.
Town pride just getting there for renters because it's not their town. It's just where they hang their hat temporarily. It's a shame, but it's the truth. You reckon?
Yeah.
I would have to agree. I'm still waiting to see him cut next door to me, so.
Well, that's gonna be.
Is that empty or still?
Bank. Oh, yeah.
No. No, somebody bought that at auction.
Oh, they did.
Which one? The one next to you?
Does anybody live in it?
Shepherd Decker.
No. Well, it's probably just not been rented though, cause every house.
They're gonna be flipping it, but somebody said they, they might have to hold on to it every year first.
Well, you would usually rent it though.
It was a sheriff's sale.
Yeah, you, they can reclaim it back. The owners can reclaim it back. They have a certain amount of time.
I thought a sheriff's sale.
It's still in Shepherd Decker.
I know that's a tax sale you have a year. I thought a sheriff's sale was the sheriff's trying to get the money, the bank.
Right. I thought it was a done deal. The bank's already got it.
And if they don't, then if it doesn't get paid, then it goes to tax sale. Then that's where the one-year kicks in to pay back with ten percent. Then if it doesn't go that way, then they have commissioner's A sale, then they have commissioner's B sale.
So you're saying a sheriff's sale is final?
I thought sheriff's sale was, if they didn't sell it, if the bank didn't get what they would take.
October, they can claim it back. That's what I heard.
I knew they can do that on tax sale. I never knew that about sheriff's sale.
Well, how did we get the property next door?
Google that. Google that sheriff's sale.
How did we get the property next door?
It took, it took some time.
Was that the commissioner's sale?
That was bright.
Yeah, well, no, it was commissioners that we bought that. The one right next door, we bought it off a commissioner's sale, didn't we?
Yeah. I think Derringer cut the front the other day just to try to keep the bugs down at the front.
Oh, good.
Environments, yeah. If you live next door to a property, I tried to keep the property next to me mowed.
Has anybody been over there to mow yet? No. Well, Beeler owns it, so maybe he will. Who knows?
Well, at least now we have somewhere we can say, hey, come mow this grass or we're gonna.
We're gonna put a lien on it.
Exactly.
Yeah, we're talking about Ty's place sold.
Oh, I seen that. Who bought that?
Adam Beeler.
The people, I think probably are either gonna rent it or flip it or put some money.
Flipping ain't happening very good right now. Maybe they might rent it, but flipping is not the thing that's happening right now.
That one pretty cheap.
Well, I thought it was under sale for twenty-four and I saw that it sold for thirty-six.
What, the house next to Buddy?
What you talking about?
That, the one by you sold pretty cheap.
Oh.
How much?
That's the one I'm talking about.
I didn't even know it was for sale.
How much did it sell for?
I saw where it sold for thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Oh, I'd have bought that.
Oh, it's not one worth five.
Oh, just, just so I can, I can find the finest people in, in the United States to move next door, buddy. That'd be great.
I don't care.
I'd have paid thirty-six thousand dollars.
That house is in desperate, desperate shape.
The plumbing. I paid for it.
The one next to me was, went for sixty-eight. And they're gonna need to bring in some dumpsters.
Oh, Buddy's, next to Buddy? Five.
He's talking.
I know. Five full dumpsters. They towed it out of there.
Yeah, but they haven't even towed the stuff out of this one yet. It's still in there.
And.
They just walked, they basically just walked away.
The prior owner, that cost him over a hundred thousand to buy that and you say it just sold for sixty-something?
Yeah, it did, they did.
Wasn't that a three-bedroom?
Yeah. They're lit, they, I think they list it as a three-bedroom. It's not quite a three-bedroom though.
Still pretty size though.
Yes.
It's smaller than mine.
Is it?
Yeah.
Here's the long.
Yeah, but the rooms in that are chopped up in that house next to me.
That's how mine is.
Well, I think a lot of these older home, here in Greensport, are like that. The one, Ty's old house is chopped up. It still had the, what they call it, where you got spools and wiring and.
Top knob and tube.
Knob and tube, wiring upstairs. And that's probably what antiquated it in nineteen thirties or something.
Sheriff's sale and tax sale is different. There's tax sale, we got till October. That's two properties in town.
Okay, now what about sheriff's sale?
I didn't find it over there on what it said.
So so far, I'm half right.
Yeah, I think we are. Yeah, this is.
I don't hear that too often.
So you think in sheriff's sale is final?
Well, I, I guess I always thought sheriff's sale is what.
Tax sale was, was a one-year.
In the bank.
The lady that did the, the sales where, and she said they should go, go right in there.
Yeah, see, that's what I thought too. When you get a sheriff's sale, you get immediate ownership.
Cause it's already with the.
Tax sale, right, a year. But that's it.
Yeah.
You know, tax.
How they do it over in Centerville? They just, they just throw them out in the street and say you're done?
Claim it back.
Yeah, till October. They got, I think, October.
That's on the, the one next to me?
No. The tax sale is, uh, at different property, two-eleven South Main and one on Plum Street.
So they'll have to wait a year for, for you to do anything really?
It says, uh, October seventeenth to twenty-four. They can read in the, these two. So, but it's right about sheriff's sale is different.
Don't put that in the minutes, please.
So whatever they, the people bought it at, the sheriff's sale. The people that are, being sold from the sheriff's sale can claim it back by paying what they paid.
Say that again?
Okay, my house goes up for sheriff's sale and you come in and you buy it for forty thousand, hypothetically. I can re, I said sheriff's sale. I mean, tax.
Tax, right.
I can reclaim that up until October.
Ten percent more than when I paid for it.
That I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's what it used to be.
You weren't, you weren't seeing this.
Yeah. I'm already right. I don't wanna prove myself wrong.
No, she wanted to show you who, this is the latest one, next to the elevator.
Oh.
What the green?
And that's the same, that house was already bought like three years ago.
Who just bought that?
The green one?
No.
No, no, no.
No, no. On the same side of the street.
Little red one on the corner.
Oh, with the black, uh, privacy thing or whatever?
I think there's, yeah.
I think.
I don't remember any black privacy things.
The, where the front porch looking thing is or?
Yeah, it's on the, this side of the house. Yeah, right on the corner of Plum and Main Street.
The one by the elevator?
Yeah.
Okay, so Crosley owned it and just sold it to somebody.
I know.
Who bought it?
You talking about the green one on the corner?
Is it the one that Swafford or somebody lived in years ago?
We're talking about the one across the street to the east.
Yeah, on the east side.
Oh, the one that.
The little red one.
The little red one.
Oh, little red one.
Now, you should be hooked to the, to the fur barn.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Now, the other one you're talking about across the street, two-story, I know somebody was trying to buy that.
Whoever bought it lived there before, but it's for their kids now or something?
Bill Tandy is the one that's buying that, I believe.
Not thinking of his name. I thought it was, okay.
Oh, he's the one that bought the elevator?
I was calling him.
No, no, he bought the house at the elevator, often.
So they should build that elevator.
Two-story green on the corner.
He's buying that one too.
Ford used to live on that two-story.
Actually, I'd be happy if they come in and start.
The green one there.
It was Mike Ford, but not Colt.
Okay. Well, Mike Ford, that house, I think Tandy was buying that or his stepson's gonna buy it and, and live in it or rent it or whatever. But yeah. Small town, I tell ya.
Yeah.
See, this right here tells you what the back taxes was. And so if, with, by October date, you pay ten percent, which is that, with the back taxes, and they can have it back.
And of course, they're divorced and he signed over his half to her, so this doesn't make any sense that it's still of both their names.
Alrighty, moving right along.
Sewer plant.
Waste water treatment plant monthly report. That must be misneeded.
That's me, yeah.
Nope, 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 I'm on, uh, wait for it to come out month. Yeah, Doug, two, Doug's gonna be back to back. You're, uh. Yeah, you're down under Bob there, dismerstness.
Hi, Doug. Hi. Hang on, I gotta get a brownie.
Everybody that doesn't remember Doug.
Thank you, sir.
Brownie catcher.
Brownie catcher.
Sewer plant, we had a problem with the generator. Uh-oh, yeah. So when they built it, they used metallic seal tight underground. It's deteriorated. And the, uh, yeah, it's full of water. I've got shorts in it and I'm sending off alarms now constantly because the control panel shortened out. Constantly because the control panel shortened out. So I've gotta lay, uh, some E M T down in, in ground and run new wires to the control panel and rewire that. I know it's fun.
We're gonna, you need to backhoe or something to dig it up?
I know, it's too close to building too much underneath, it's hand digging.
So you gotta rewire that control panel?
Get over Ricky.
It's just, it's really just pulling new control wires. There's a half a dozen, maybe a little more. New control wires I've gotta pull, but it's just a process of doing it.
New control wires.
It is online, chemicals are online now, uh, we wasted a dumpster and a half, I've gotta finish filling the dumpster yet. Uh, weather got cold on me and started raining, I'm not gonna stand out there and wait on the dumpster to fill it, cause it's there to wait on me.
There you go.
So as soon as next week we'll finish wasting and get rid of the sludge, uh, did clean the. The outgoing contact tank and dosing tank and the de-chlor tanks. It's running.
And we're in.
Compliance?
Right, right now, we're in compliance, yes.
Okay, anybody got any other questions about the wastewater treatment plant's monthly report?
E M T?
On the wire.
And I've got about fifteen different, or six different, six, seven different. Colors I gotta pull, plus I gotta pull a, uh, ethernet. So I've got it, I've probably got the wire. It's nothing big, it's a ten gauge. And I've probably got it out there, it's just the E M T I gotta get and the.
Using ten gauge for control wire?
Couple of them are power wires. I'm sorry Buddy.
No, you're fine.
What did you say?
No, 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 I just wondered if we was done with the wastewater treatment plant and, uh, with. Making motion, we accept a verbal report from Doug?
Second it?
Supposed to be made properly seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say the same. Thank you, motion carried. Uh, speaking of facilities.
Streets. Uh, Maple Street's a problem.
What's going on Maple?
You got another collapse?
The other two, um. Collection are collapsing.
Is this the one Kyle called about?
And the one across the street from him, they're both in the same condition.
Really?
Yes, uh, what's that? I said that a year ago, we were gonna be looking at. Problem I'm gonna have on Maple Street is trying to find a good section of pipe to hook to. It's clay tile, um, I'm probably gonna have to cut clean across the street. And I'm probably gonna have to start from where we made Nita's last cut in front of her house and run all the way down to the other one. Um, so we've gotta get with our buddies at Hagerstown and see if they'll loan us a steel plate.
We, we, we got one from state, uh, that we covered over.
We borrowed Hagerstown's. We borrowed one from Hagerstown last time.
Well, that one time from right there on the corner, South Main was from the state, and I got that, that's Ron's buddy, and I got his number. If I can dig it out, I'll call him and ask him about that.
But we're gonna have to have a plate cut, uh, the guys who started, uh, making the forms for the collection boxes.
Oh, was that what you were building in the garage?
Yeah, that's what we had.
I thought you were building cornhole.
Yeah, those are collection boxes.
But the one in front of Nita's house is done now, right?
All except for scratching the gravel out, but if I gotta dig up the rest of the road, I'm not gonna scratch gravel out and pay that one.
Okay.
Until we, until we get them all done.
Yeah, hypothetical money.
I ain't got a clue right now.
I mean, twenty thousand, thirty thousand?
I think, I think if it's in front of your house, you gotta pay for it.
I'm, I'm gonna say probably around ten maybe.
You're gonna rent your equipment, you go.
Cause we gotta, I gotta rent an excavator, backhoe's just not nimble enough.
Brian got any excavators?
Yes, Brian doesn't got it. Uh, what size excavator?
I just need a mini.
All right, you gonna need a bobcat too?
All the way to do fill in.
And you need a dump truck?
Dump trailer and a dump truck chair.
Yeah.
Well, he's got both, but if you want a dump truck, he can bring it over too.
Take over talking.
Probably hired him. You're good, you're good.
So what, we would have to pay him to use it?
He don't, he don't take money.
Or trade him in kind.
He's not, yeah, there you go.
You can have Buddy.
Yeah, they're probably finding, cause it's got the old clay tile, I mean, we dug. An extra forty feet before we found a good tire. So we could tie onto, if we'd went back another, another section, it would have probably, the next one was probably collapsed. Just.
It's just a mess, that's all there is to it.
Infrastructure's deteriorating, I mean, every place we touch, it wants to crumble, so. So we could probably realistically look. If, if it got bad, we'd probably realistically dig it all the way down to thirty-eight. And replacing all the tile all the way down.
All right, uh, can, can I get?
That would be worst case scenario.
That he can just get ahead of you and make arrangements?
Cause that was a dangerous place last time.
All right.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
We heard that.
So that's the, that's the worst news on the streets?
Yeah, he said, you got an excavator, dump truck, bobcat, whatever you wanna borrow, I'll give you his number and stuff before we borrow today, and then. He said texting just tell him who you are, and then that way, he's never had your number before.
I need the phone number and name.
For Brian?
State police, I believe you said?
No, you talking about the, the star? The star reporter?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll get that.
Uh. Where we at, guys?
We were still on the street.
What'd we say about the facilities, everything facilitated?
Yes, yeah, we were still with the street.
Don't bother probably, apparently.
Yeah, um, the guys have been cleaning out storm drains, uh, getting guns scraped out of them. We do need to go out and jet them, uh, there's been a lot of garbage over the winter passed through.
That's normal, I tell you.
Yeah.
Did we get a good, uh.
State's lease.
On like the jet or?
Yeah, I, I looked at that, and I suggested to Nita that we raise, we raised the value of everything at least ten to fifteen percent.
We can't do that, can we Brenda?
Well, I actually sent email and asked him about the, there's a notation on there for an increase. Automatically six percent if you don't put anything. So I've asked her to clarify that for me, so we would know.
Those, those values to go to, to go to replace it, we lost the generator of the paper today, I mean, we, we're not gonna get anything.
Right.
We're only gonna, they're only gonna get rated for actual cash values, that's what I don't understand, increasing six percent.
They, whether cash value in replacing them is worth more than what we paid for.
Well, that may be, but I'm just saying, they're only gonna pay, I believe, the way it reads, they're only gonna pay actual cash value. So I want to know, understand.
Oh, I get it.
The increase will get us.
Right, I get it, I understand.
If it don't replace cash.
I know they told us that with the, uh, fire department, that on our, our trucks and stuff, we need doing three seventy year. Their value on the insurance policy.
So they're getting one? I did.
I just thought of something too before I forget. Do, have we found anything about the fire extinguishers that were just like sitting out there, like, there was a bunch of them, like.
Where do they go?
You mean find out, I know everything about them, what do you wanna know?
They're not where they're supposed to be, that's why we need eight in the garage.
They're not, they're supposed to be mounted on.
And they're not at the date on their tags, last we checked.
Well, that's Corson, Corson was out, they did them, and the tags are.
They've done them now?
They, they did them.
Somebody's supposed to initially monthly too, though, like.
Yep.
I've never got them.
Well, how do you know that they're okay and they'll work?
Cause they haven't been, they haven't been discharged in a year.
And they're in the green.
They're in charge.
Green, they're good.
I just wondered, cause that, that one time it's in the garage, they've just all sitting in one corner. That's not really gonna get as much cut.
Well, that's from last year, and they have a.
Okay.
And they'll be here again this year, they come every year and inspect them.
See, they get, they get pulled out, and we switch vehicles, so we got rid of a couple vehicles, we switched them over, and they just never got reinstalled.
Okay.
Being honest with you. Just didn't happen, it wasn't.
Vehicle's very unsafe, if they don't have fire care to go. Okay.
No, the one above it?
Uh, did we make a motion that we accept the. Facilities coordinator report?
I think that's what you're doing now, I'll second that.
All righty.
Motion's been made properly seconded to accept the facilitator's report, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say the same, thank you, motion carried. Now it's Mr. Bob, anything going on?
Well, between me and Doug, in my hours I'm working, uh. Yeah, have had rented one of the apartments already, and had somebody move in.
Really?
Your candy.
Down there?
Yes.
All right.
The far, the far east one, backside. Uh, she had to move out of her place on account of mold, so.
Is she a local person, or she?
I don't know who, I don't, I haven't had time to get contact with her.
I need the address, so I can start doing.
Well, it's, I, I guess.
Don't know which one it is.
I'll have to look. One of four.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I.
I gotta come over and see you tomorrow anyhow.
Do you know the name of this person?
Alls I know is, is he called me and wanted to know if. It need, can be inspected, and I said, yes, we inspected it, because she wanted to move her furniture in. The day before it was really ready to go, which was all right, because she had to get out of the one. On account of mold.
What's the water system up there? Does everybody have their own?
No.
One well for four places. Well, I know Kettler put that well in, because I was involved in that.
Got a hundred foot well or a shallow well, surely it's not a shallow.
Well, I wouldn't think with Kettler putting it in, that was when Opal still lived there and had no water. And we set her up through White Cunningham. And they hired Kettler to put that in, and she got a, like a twenty year loan for two percent.
Yeah, I, alls I know is they could.
Eighty to a hundred foot well in, wouldn't you think?
I would think so, I didn't know that one property could have, one, four apartments could have one well.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't know that.
There's probably only one well there where the apartments are, up on.
Well, when you guys, when you guys do the address, like, that address is gonna be, what, a Carriage Street address?
Yeah.
But then, but then, then they, they have to go to the post office and get a post office box. That's the only way you're gonna be able to bill them after they get a post office box.
I'm going to the post office tomorrow, and give them the addresses of what's there. The one on Main Street is one seventeen. The first house on Carriage Street is seven. The next one's eleven.
What happened to nine?
You had five.
Nine, eleven, and fifteen, I think.
Thirteen.
Well, I have to look, it's been so long.
Well, is the one, does it sit on the alley then? Uh, the, how many addresses are on Carriage over?
Three.
Three.
Okay, then one on Main.
One on Main. The one on Main.
So it's seven, nine, eleven, and Main?
Yeah.
Five, seven, and nine.
Yeah, five, seven, and nine.
I'm just, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm just wondering if they get a.
It's five Main Street.
At some point, we gotta, we gotta send dispatch, a, a text message or an email or something.
And what are you going to the post office for, Bob?
To let the post office know what the addresses are for post office boxes.
That's what you told me before.
Okay.
Well, and if there's enough feet away from the post office, they can get a mailbox, but it has to follow the. Line of travel that she goes.
Yeah.
Or he goes.
Is there, is there post office boxes on Carriage?
They don't have, uh, mailboxes on Carriage, do they?
I don't think you know.
The, uh.
Well, if it follows the route, if it doesn't follow the route, just like.
So they came out.
I'm eligible for a mailbox, but I can't have it on my street, I have to put it over on Main Street or.
Yeah, that, that's the way they would be. Whichever side the mailbox is on, if there's already mailboxes on the south, or the north side. They would have to put their mailbox on the north side.
I don't think they're far enough away from the post office down there.
I don't remember seeing.
I don't either.
I've seen the one down there on Maple Street, that's about it, that's where, that's where I see mailbox at.
Any, anyhow, they, uh.
Twenty feet off the road.
They're, they're, they've, they've put the clean out in.
Yep.
And everything, you know, and right now, to my, from what they got, everything's up to code.
What's a square foot in that apartment?
They told me, I don't remember.
Is it nine hundred, twelve hundred?
No, I think, I think it's, I think it's gotta be seven fifty.
What are they, twelve, two bedroom?
Yeah.
All of them are two bedroom?
Yeah, they're nice places, they're gonna be nice places.
I wonder what they rent for?
All you can get.
I think I know who's doing the electrical over there.
They, uh.
They, they.
They poured a cement sidewalk on some of them already.
You're kidding me?
What is it?
I, that's just on the way, I'll tell you here in a minute.
Okay, after we get off camera.
Yes.
So any, anyhow, everything's up to date, uh, on, on them over there. Doug's been helping me out with that, cause I haven't had a chance to get over there on, due to my work.
That's okay, it is.
And we got four new sewer hookups.
Well, no, you got three new.
Three new ones.
Three new ones, yes.
Okay, but how about three one five South Water Street?
The gentleman that was on Main Street that put the roof on, I gotta get with Nita. Uh, that's been paid and checked out, uh, so I think.
Roof on Main Street.
The guy you told me about.
drunk?
Right next to him.
Oh, 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 oh. Couple, Darren.
Darren.
Okay.
So that's all, that's all been taken care of, so, I think everything's pretty well up to date.
Well, we haven't got anything, uh, the sewer permit for three one five South Water Street, haven't got that.
The one down here?
Yes.
All right, okay, I haven't seen him.
Okay.
I, I'll, I'll check with him tomorrow, with.
In twenty North Main, I have it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, they ain't got no water running, so they don't have to pay till they, they, till they're pooping in the pipe, do they? Only at the riller, that's, that's it.
So, but I think everything's pretty well.
He's not paying electric bill either, so you know. Hmm, Steve's out.
So. That's, uh, all I got to report.
Very good, Bob. Thank you. I'm making motion we accept Bob's, uh, verbal report.
Seconding.
Uh, uh, motion been made properly seconded. Accept Bob's verbal report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say the same. Thank you, Bob. Alright, now sewer utility monthly income and disbursements.
Oh, God. I've got a lot of customers that's paying ahead.
Well.
Yeah, we got a good month in March. We took in fifteen thousand. And we didn't spend it quite that, so. It's pretty good right now. But we do have a lot of customers that have paid out through the end of the year into next year. Um, at the first of March, though, we had eight accounts that was sent to ninety days. And we, we had four to pay and then the clerk had to file four new sewer liens in March. And that makes a total of thirty-one outstanding sewer charges to be paid to the Wayne County Tracery's Department. So it's not as bad as it used to be. We're doing something better. Uh, that's all I have.
Wow, that's short, you.
Yep, that's sweet. Can you imagine?
That's all I can do, just imagine. Alright, very good. I'm making motion we accept Nita's sewer monthly utility income and disbursements verbal written report and everything else. Been made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say the same. Thank you, Nita. Street report.
I think Doug already went into that a little bit.
We got streets, yeah.
He said what they.
So we've got that done. Uh, unfinished business. Speed humps and paving. Weather, it's, you gotta wait on the weather.
So a question on paving. Do we want to pave?
Well.
Depends on whether we have any money.
I'd like to say if we can get some money out of the stellar program, I'd like to see us be able to tear up South Main and repay.
I don't wanna wait till, I don't wanna wait till July and they pave.
Right.
That's gonna be twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Right. But I'm saying that is gonna be our largest project is the one south of the tracks because we're gonna tear all that stuff up. If there's something that we can paint.
So that's those little potholes kind of things. Well, potholes normally, we, we fix those, not getting approved. We just fix the potholes.
Right.
But, so we've got the alley back by the cemetery. We've got the one that runs up between the old leather shop. Really bad shape. Both of those two need to have a grinder taking down the middle of them and then brought two, which is a good plot back.
Brian's got that stick, that skid steer that you, he said that you guys can borrow if you wanna get a grinder attachment for that, for asphalt.
So, I mean, there's, I mean, we, and I'll talk to him. I'll give him a text here.
I think we probably need to get some estimates and you'll see what kind of money it's gonna take and.
But yeah, if we're gonna do any paving, we need to, we need to get it planned out and start hitting it the first of June.
I mean, how much, how much asphalt do you think it would do, do the, do South Main if you, if you went out?
I could, uh, give me, give me a little bit, take a tape measure and I can figure it. Uh, there's quite a bit. Uh, it's five passes.
Five passes?
And how big is per pass?
You're looking two inches thick.
Eight foot.
How long do you get?
Um, I'm running, uh, I'm probably running twelve foot.
Twelve foot swath?
Per pass?
Yeah.
And you say you gotta have five?
No, maybe, it's four. I'm sorry, it's four. I made four passes down. I had to stop and think.
So is it, you thinking it's forty-eight feet curb to curb?
It's quite a bit. That's, it's a big stretch.
Yeah, it's pretty wide.
Darned.
There's, it's a lot of asphalt there.
But the main thing is prepping it right.
Yeah, one, we grind it, we're ready to go. We come in, have a milling machine, tear that stuff up, get rid of that junk.
Oh, you just wanna take that old paving off or you're gonna take some of the dirt out of the center?
No, well, not, not on the south side of town. If we do the south side of town, the north side of town, we're gonna try to get them to cut lower in the center.
That's where I thought, yeah.
Get rid of that hump that's been built up over the years from laying on top.
So you have to take some dirt out on the north?
Nah, we won't take any dirt out. It's thick enough.
I mean, what's, what's the probability of being able to do Main from south to north? I don't see it being probable.
I don't either. I said we'd be doing from track, the track to the thirty-eight or the track south. It's a lot of asphalt either way.
Oh, yeah. What is it up to now?
I don't know.
Sixty a ton, sixty-five a ton?
It was, uh, last year or two years ago, it was sixty-eight dollars a ton. So I imagine we're probably seventy-five, maybe eighty dollars a ton. I know the trucks are running. Uh, I just talked to a guy the other day and they're getting a hundred and twenty-five an hour.
True.
So they're about, we were paying, uh, eighty bucks an hour. Which, I mean, cost of fuel and.
It's cost of doing business.
Yeah.
So those are probably things we're not gonna do. Part of the, you did, what, the alley and the, the alleys or something?
Yeah.
It's kinda hard to justify an alley that rarely gets used versus a street, though. I mean, and I understand that one's worse than the other. But, uh, is there anything saying an alley has to be paved?
Well, so one way or another, you're going, at some point, you know, residents can want us to fix that, the issues. So how do we fix it? Do we tear all the asphalt up? Do we put down gravel?
Do we take the stuff that we're tearing up off Main and put it down and roll over it?
I've still gotta tear that up to get it to life, to get a level surface.
Is it?
You wouldn't be able to get that.
All the way down?
You wouldn't build the asphalt next to the old leather shop, would you? How you gonna, how you gonna do?
Just get a dip pole.
Backhoe or something, just throw it in there and lay it down?
Well, that's, I can get it, I can get a dump truck backed in there. I can still get a dump truck backed up in there.
But, but you just can't use a spreader?
Yeah.
Your asphalt?
Yeah, it'll fit up through there.
Oh, yeah.
It's tight, but it'll fit.
There, it's just twelve foot.
Yeah, well, I can suck down in, so. I bring everything in.
Are you saying you have to do that on North Main and South Main both there?
They both need ground up, yes.
Well, you said one time they need it, Maple would need ground up.
Maple needs the hump cut out of it, but it's not.
After you grind it, how much time do you got before you, the residents?
Maple need to pay for their own.
I mean, can you spend, spend a couple of days just grinding stuff up?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, you come back with a, with a burdum, not a push burdum, but a rotary burdum. You sweep it and then you start paving.
I think we need a priority list.
Yeah. Well, and you guys need to, you need to help with the priority list.
I just noticed down through Water Street, the middle.
Water's dropping too. That's the problem. Water's dropping. We're, we're gradually sliding over the edge of the bank.
No, I'm talking about right down the middle of the road.
Oh, yeah, where it started, the seam's starting to split.
But on the west side, it's going away, isn't it?
Yeah, and then down by you, I mean, you can feel, you can feel your car go like that as you're driving where it's sliding.
The only thing.
Build that up.
They have to come in and put those.
You have to cut the road off and gotta put anchors down in there and.
Stakes and rip raft or whatever.
Maybe that's what we need that money for. From seller.
I don't know, there ain't enough money to.
It's, I mean, that's one in a million. We'll get a dime.
Yeah.
Well, I think you'll get money out of this, but it's gonna be like a small pro, something maybe forty, fifty thousand dollars.
I mean, that's gonna do like half of one of our projects.
Is it even worth a ton?
Eh, probably, if you can get a fifty thousand dollar project for five thousand bucks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Well, you got it.
Unless.
Hey, Jaden.
Unless you can get, you know, something like, if he can buy a, can he buy a, can he buy a, a dump truck or something that he can use for asphaltin? I mean.
And we were, we're still talking about what doing the, the speed humps. We just, what, bulk down or whatever?
Bulk down or stake it down, whatever, just get them in there and. See how long it lasts.
We need to see which ones we're gonna be tearing up before we go putting any of them down anyway.
Well, if you do the ones that stake down, you pull them right back up when you, whenever you're gonna do it.
Say we need to identify where the, uh, the most, and we know the most speeders are gonna be on the biggest stretch of road, which is Main Street.
About front, just, just pat, just right in front of your house?
Right in front of your house, that's midway. That's about sixty-eight mile an hour if you do it right from the curve. Bang some gears.
They keep doing that, I guess.
And if you fly over the railroad track and get airborne.
I've done that, but it's.
I don't, I don't see, I don't, like, when I'm down there, I don't see people flying over the tracks that much.
No.
But I see people coming around the curtain, that corner, and they, it's like, you know, NASCAR.
And they'll slow down when they get close to the road.
That's right. But if you put them humps by your house or maybe a little bit further south, it's gonna slow people down. I'm telling you. They slow down or their, their teeth rattle.
Are those pretty pricey or?
They're probably a couple of hundred. I mean, we didn't use those in Carthy. We used bags. Bags of cold patch and formed it and we were done, painted it yellow.
Well, those cold patch bags, five, six bags of them cost you more than you think.
Oh, I, I don't know how much they're on.
We didn't wanna mess up the plow, though.
Exactly. That was, uh, we had humps down there.
Well, here's the deal. There's gonna be signs where these are at, so there's no reason why the plows, it should be an issue. If you know where they're at and you still messing up, that's on you.
What are you gonna do? Pay somebody ten dollars an hour and make them replace a hump? That takes eight hours or they're paved for, cause they hit it with a plow?
It'd be no different than them hitting a car. You, you don't pay them ten dollars an hour so they can go hit a car.
We got insurance for that, though.
You, you got insurance for that patch. Anything that you drive and you hit and destroy, your insurance covers that.
There you go, Nita.
Yeah, but.
All insurance.
Yeah, but are you gonna turn in two hundred dollar, a two hundred dollar bill for, to your insurance company? I wouldn't.
Probably got a five hundred dollar deductible or a thousand.
Exactly.
Okay. Cause I'm still getting people complaining.
You know what, though? But you know what? If you buy the ones that you can stake down, you can, if you don't like them there, you, you can move them. If they tear them up. And lift them up, you put them back down, you move them somewhere else. That's what's nice about those.
What about, uh, as, for a minute here, how about, uh, moving our, uh, slow down speed limit signs, put, put one on Main Street? Temporal.
I know, but I like to look at it.
I just, I, I just shouldn't buy another one.
Oh, the speeds?
Radar speeds.
Yeah, that might work.
Cause we've got them where we can move them. That's what I was told when you got, put them in, if they could be moved from place to place.
Yeah, if you want.
How much are they?
About, uh.
Two hundred for six grand, about three grand a pop, ain't they?
Yeah.
But you can move them. And like, that's what I'm saying, move them for a couple of weeks and move them. I mean, is it a big chore to move them?
I think it's cheaper to buy a couple of speed humps and nail down and put signs up than to move radar signs around, cause radar signs, you can, you can move them around, put them on. Like a, you know, like a trailer type, you know what I'm talking about? When you see other towns, they put them on a little trailer mount. They just chain it. They go around chaining different things.
I thought we had these set up where we could take them off the poster on and put them on another post anytime we wanted to.
I got that, Doug. I'm sure you can. I'm sure you.
And what I'm saying is that until something better comes along and be, uh, until we get done with any paving where we can put a hump on top of it. Start moving them around and leaving them there for a couple of weeks. I mean, see if it helps, see if it helps.
You have to talk to Doug and see, cause it's, it's all solar powered. If you just take the whole thing and move it, I just don't, I just don't know. If we start doing that, do we gotta do something with NDOT and undo the permit, call, cancel the permit, then have to redo the permit? That's why.
Why wasn't that brought up where we thought about buying these and make them where we can move them then?
I thought we could.
You can physically move them. I don't know, I mean, physically, you go out there and bolt it and move it.
As long as you got permission from the property owner.
But now you got.
That's our property, huh?
You got NDOT into the picture now, and I didn't know that they would be involved.
I don't know if they would be or not. All I know is that, yeah, we had to pull strings to get a melon there.
They asked for, uh, forgiveness instead of permission.
Well, no.
They come down and say, you can't do that. Say, okay, we'll move them back.
No, you, put, put a pole or post where you want it and have Doug move them.
We'll ask him about it. So see what, see what it entails. I mean, if it's a major job, I agree.
Should be, should be just a ridge.
Exactly.
I mean, you gotta mount the pole wherever, where the pole is.
Yeah, there are special posts. I knew that.
Yeah, so, but, but that's, that's all you gotta do, do to, uh, uh, if you wanna put them radar signs in a different place.
Okay.
Cheaper, it wouldn't be too bad putting it down there, cause then they'd think somebody's actually watching the speed.
Well, do they still have that program for one of the colleges where they'll set them up for a month or two?
You mean, oh, from I U P U R? Yeah, we can, we can call them again, but.
Oh, I'm gonna ask them. See if they had a couple, then we could just put them on Main Street on, uh, cause North Main has the same issue too. There's people flying out through there also. And because that's the longest stretch of street in town. Both sides are, are thirty-eight there. So, yeah, if you think about it, Avron or.
Yeah, that was through, um, Purdue University.
Yeah, Purdue.
Yeah, cause.
Your old buddy Mitch. Your buddy Mitch. Call, but next time you're having donuts or something in the morning with Mitch Daniels, talk to him.
Picture right up there, bud. I can stand their attention when you say his name.
Yeah, all we had to do was pay insurance on them.
Right. Do what?
All we had to do was pay insurance on them.
Exactly. That was a pretty good deal for us.
Yeah, see if we can get it for two or three months.
Alright, Nita, talk to us about Internal Control's corrective action plan under review.
Well, we're still working on it. Hoping to come up with something that will satisfy State Board of Accounts.
Well, what we're doing has to satisfy them or they're not welcome back here anymore.
Exactly. And you know what? I mean, there's only so many words. I need a wordsmith that can really, really load it up and.
Are we talking about like Kamla Harris? You want a word salad like it?
I, I can type ha, 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 whenever I want.
Oh, gosh.
But I, I, I don't know how to stretch it out and make it any different to them and make them any happier.
What we're doing now has to meet the requirement. So, and I don't know that we need to, uh.
Re, I just like government. I've gotta find another way to say what we've already said.
You see, my mom said. Mama knows best.
She's gonna kick here.
Okay, uh.
There are no fireworks.
Yeah, open burning.
But you know what, though? Here's the deal on this, this whole thing about open burning. Are you guys getting complaints about people burning? Because I'm not.
Yes, we are, because we're getting it from our, our township fire department.
For people in town burning?
This is all stemming from the, uh, the fire department and.
Right, well, they want.
For them to do that.
They wanna, I guess, unify, make it, make it one thing, but I'm just saying, it, the inside of town in Greensport, I don't have, I don't have any complaints about people burning stuff.
Well. Because nobody complains about their neighbor.
Oh, yeah, the local.
I mean, yeah, if your neighbor burns a mattress or something like that, they need to be shot, actually, but.
Yeah, hey, I've seen them burning cows just right outside of town, so I know what you're saying.
That, that happened in town too, though.
Yep. Burning cows?
Yeah. They're not living there anymore, but it was next door to me, I guess. I supposedly wanted to call, but I wasn't even in town. I didn't even know about, tell you back.
Well, yeah, people, people, they, they don't have any respect.
It was actually, I guess, a little kid at the Ball Diamonds that saw the smoke and told the, the, the fire department, and then they went down there.
They're not right. They just don't get it.
I didn't know anything about it till I got back. I was in Indianapolis.
If you're in favor, let's check on Doug, see if he's gonna be able to come back in, cause there's some, uh, questions.
Yeah. Is he in the bathroom?
No, he went outside.
Outside with him.
And I'm thinking, this is what.
He left.
This is what Kyle has submitted, I'd say, Ken. But this was burning in.
Well, I've, I've read this two or three times. It's, it's, it's too much. It's over the top. I, I don't like it at all.
What, the, the new one?
Yeah, it's too much.
I don't know where it went.
No, the, the, the one, the reason I like.
His vehicle's there, but he's not out there.
Because it protects us legally.
Or in the vehicle.
Excuse me, say that again?
It would protect us legally. We have a.
He's gonna decipher half of this. That's the, the big problem.
Hey, I tell you what, go ahead and turn the key. We're gonna take a ten minute recess. I'm gonna call a meeting back to.
As long as you don't go, I'm your father.
Only Rick was not his father. Yeah, ordinance to regu, uh, ordinance regulating open burning, this was, uh, sent in from a fire employee, a fireman. Way too busy to come to a meeting. Uh, says Indiana's air pollution control rules generally prohibits open burning. There are certain agriculture and maintenance exceptions to the open burning rules. Smoke from burning household trash, including plastic containers. Is more toxic than the smoke from burning clean wood. Protecting your health is worth a small fee for proper waste disposal. IDM always encourages alternatives, alternatives to open burning such as recycling. I think he's thinking open burning mean you can burn anything you want. That is not the case.
But that's what, that's what the ordinance is all about.
Kyle's not hearing about crap like that. He's the one.
Yeah.
He's the one that burnt the pile of leaves in front of Lindsay's.
And we, he paid the fine.
But that's what, the ordinance addresses that.
Okay, uh, these rules must always be followed. I just wanna hit these on, so you can.
I don't care what.
Only clean wood products may be burned. Treated wood is not clean wood. Wood products coated with stain, paint, preservatives, glue, or other coatings. Are not allowed to be burned. Residential open burning of clean wood products shall be in a non-combustible and ventilated container. Recreational or ceremonial fires such as fires for scouting activities or cooking may only burn clean wood and products. Or clean wood products, paper, or charcoal. Burning must be done during safe weather conditions, not during high winds or on pollution alert days. Fires must be attended until completely extinguished and adequate fire suppression equipment present. Non-recreational burning must be done during daylight hours and extinguished prior to sunset. Open burning is not allowed at mobile home parks, apartment or condominium complexes, or buildings of more than four dwelling units. Fires must be extinguished if they create a fire hazard, nuisance, pollution, problem, or threat to public health. Burning must comply with all other federal, state, and local laws. Burning must comply with all other federal, state, and local laws, rules, or ordinances. Additional restrictions apply in Lake Porter, Clark, or Floyd counties. No open burning of trash, leaves, or yard waste is allowed. Wanna learn more, visit IDM's open burning site at www.idm, uh, blah, 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 blah. So, that was submitted for, I guess, for your benefit, my benefit, our benefit, I don't know. I did have one question from a concerned citizen, uh, and he did bring up that township slash town, and I said, I think the idea was to make one ordinance that will cover both equally. His question was, if you have already piled up a pile, uh, when this comes into effect, will someone be allowed to burn that? And my answer to him was that I would bring it before the fire chief, but I would think that if that's the case, that the fire department could go around, if somebody requested that, they would come by and watch them burn that, make sure it was safely done.
All they have to do is contact me.
That's, that's what I thought, but I.
That's all they have to do is contact me.
Thank you.
We have, we have a few people in the county that, that do burn, and so when the, the rule, you know, the thing we told them is contact us. If it's, if you're doing everything right the way you're supposed to, you know, you can burn it, here's why we need to know. And then we let dispatch know, you know, if.
And when you say county, you guys have township boundaries, correct?
I mean, county like county dispatch.
I gotcha.
So, you know, like down at, uh, Jason, I can't think of his last name, owns Notch Tree Service. He had Tommy Bond dig him a hole.
Okay.
Over here on Mineral Springs, he's got a hole dug.
Pulling root there.
He calls me before he burns it, you know, that way I can let dispatch know, so if somebody's.
It's just clean wood.
Yes, and so if somebody from seventy calls, they're not dispatching us to go put it out. Cause we get toned, we're, we gotta go put it, we gotta go make the flames go away, so this way it just stops everything.
That's good.
And it, and it helps.
So you are kinda issuing a no cost permit, basically?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and that's exactly what that is.
No cost, so you're not gonna, they won't say, well, for fifty dollars, we'll send a truck out and watch it burn, make sure you don't catch up on fire, blah, blah, okay, great.
And here's my number, I'm on speed dial for you. You know, and, and farmers, same way, we tell them the same thing.
What do you think?
But if they're gonna take and burn down a building, if they're gonna burn down a barn, they're gonna burn a trailer, they're gonna clean up their building materials. We had one a couple of weeks ago that decided he was gonna burn vinyl plank floors.
Hmm, not good.
Exactly.
That's.
Well, I just made the comment, I've read through this a couple of times now, I think it's over the top, I think it's entirely too much. And my big reason for saying that is, are you gonna have to be called in every single time to decipher what has taken place?
I end up doing that anyway, this way I've got something to hand them and say, here's why.
Well, your average citizen is not going to understand this.
That's okay.
That's why it's first time's free, correct?
Yep.
Second time, the hammer time.
Yep, if you relied it when I believe, and we've had them do it.
Oh, yeah.
You know, just because they think they can.
And we just had a big, huge bonfire, just right by Buddy and I's property. We don't call it in because we want the debris gone, it's a stack of tree limbs and cardboard and.
So if you read the sizes, I mean, and they're pretty.
I saw something twenty-four inch by twenty-four inch, that's.
No, twenty-four.
That, that was on the other one.
No, that was, that was.
Ten by ten by ten.
The fire pit.
Yeah, that was a fire pit, this is a ten by ten, by ten.
Which is a pretty big area.
That's a big.
That's you, I mean, that's true, I mean, that's a, a lot in the, uh, you know, people.
Well, this one was at least that, but I don't think it was ten foot wide, it was ten foot long.
But I will say that he was out there, it was being observed.
Yes.
Yeah, from when I saw it going up, and I think I caught it late, cause it had burned down a little bit when I saw it.
And people, people like to do that and burn trash.
Well.
Well, we, yeah, we don't know, we don't wanna burn trash or cardboard or plastic.
Well, they have.
Do you remember last year, right, this, the first house right outside of town here, they had a small little foot and a half fire, they were, they were built, they were burning a stump, and it got away, and it burnt that whole grass yard and the side of the hill.
Tell me somebody wasn't monitoring.
They went out there with a hose or water or shovels or something to, to get it with a small.
And when it says in there that you gotta have, uh, fire suppression there, water, I mean, if it's just a wood fire, as long as you got hoses out there.
Something you can throw dirt on it with, you know.
But none of this is gonna apply unless somebody calls it in, is that correct?
Pretty much, I'm not, I'm not going around smoke jumping.
No.
Okay.
Now, what about recreational fires now?
They're permitted, as long as you're using clean wood, you're, you know, you can do ceremonial fires, uh, the size is ten by ten by ten.
Ceremonial fire.
Like Boy Scouts doing the ceremonial fire, if you wanna go put on your Indian headdress and.
But you can't burn humans or animals.
No, no, no Indian, no humans, but you can pretend.
Yeah, you can't go out there throwing chicken bones on the ground.
Do we take bows and arrows and guns and chase each other?
Yes, we can.
Okay, any other, Kathy, any other questions?
What's the, uh, fine, what's the fine?
Five hundred.
Is that more like?
We had kinda talked over it, thought the five hundred, and the object is not to get the money.
Not the fine. I don't want the money.
Is it, what if, okay, let's say hypothetically, you do get five hundred, you go into the fire fund.
Well, if it's in, if it's in the town, it gets where it goes, it's townless.
That's not hardly fair.
You can put it in the fire fund, I don't care where you put it.
I mean, and something, you hear all the time about, well, it's Clay Township Fire Department, but it says Greensport.
Greensport Fire Department. When we go out, we represent Greensport, you know, everything we do, we represent.
And what is the township lines? How far east do we go on thirty-eight for township?
We are Sowers, we're down to Sowers Road, um, and we'll run down just past some railroad tracks. We cut over, we, we hit seventy, um.
That's a township clear to seventy?
Yeah, we go down to Black Road too.
Okay, that's.
On Mineral Springs College Quorn, we go down to College Quorn.
Oh, okay, I see.
So those houses, that housing addition off Mineral Springs is township?
Yep.
Yeah, plenty township, yeah, really, I never knew that.
Yeah, we've got a pretty good sized area.
Yeah, I had a friend that lived on College Quorn, that's on, I don't know.
And then we contract through Jacksonburg, we get the, uh, we've got the east side of Jacksonburg. Milton's got the west side of Jacksonburg.
So why do you want that exit ramp to seventy?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No.
Got any other question?
No, I just, I just like it because it's, it covers more stuff, and he'll be the one explaining it, so. It just, I think it protects us.
It's not vague, it's not open for interpretation.
Yeah, it spells it out like completely.
Attachment page, should that have, I used to do sign, I'm just asking.
No, it, that's just definition page.
Oh, okay, all right. Son of a gun.
Well, my hammer was hiding there.
I don't know what to tell you. So, do, do we wanna approve this tonight or not?
Is it ordinance with a fine?
Yeah.
You have to, either do it in two sessions, or you have to suspend the rules?
Introduce it.
Am I right there, Danit? Boy, I have Rick's a full knowledge.
We've introduced it tonight, and then we could go ahead and take care of the next one.
Well, if you suspend the rules, you can go ahead and finish it out, right?
You can do it all night, if you, like she said, and he said, it's suspend the rules, cause the rule is you introduce it and then later, but if you suspend that, it means you can introduce it and approve it all in one night.
That's all ordinance is, that involves.
We've done it time and time again.
What did you wanna do, Kathy, would you like to suspend it, do it now, or do you wanna wait?
No, I wanna go ahead and get it over with.
Okay, I'm good with it, I like it.
I didn't, I didn't mean for it to sound that way, I would like to get this solved.
Right, get it over with.
You said it, I took it back.
I repeated something. One thing that, uh, I just wanted to, it's been a minute since I looked at, I'll be honest with you, I know we changed that to five hundred, which I think is, is just as.
Well, what's it before, five thousand?
Not a thousand.
Huh?
A thousand. Like I said, it, we just want that, we just wanna deter it.
Well, it, it's, the section here too says, the following types of fires may be allowed if approved by the Indiana Department of Environmental Engines or Management, firefighting training, so, uh, let's just say somebody says, hey, I've got this big pile, I piled it up, uh.
Do you wanna put it on and burn it for training?
Exactly.
That can be done, we have to make sure that, that there's no asbestos, the, the shingles are off of it.
So you would come out doing inspection, tell them it's good to burn, or you need to remove this before we burn it?
And we will be here to burn it and to make sure it comes down.
At no fee?
No fee.
Just a, but it would be a verbal permit?
Yeah.
And somebody would be there, okay, I like that.
Will this take the place of our present ordinance?
Yeah.
Yes.
Cause the other ones just doesn't really have, it doesn't have much to it, and this at least spells everything out. I just, I would prefer it be spelled out and everything like that.
Well, I'll entertain any mess, any, uh, yeah, things you guys want.
So, you have to motion to.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend and go ahead and pass.
Uh, suspend the rules and go to final.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what he can have, thanks for having me.
Thanks for wording it, I'll second that.
Motion has been made and properly seconded to suspend the rules and go to final vote and adopting, uh, ordinance which would be, ordinance four, probably wouldn't it, Nita? Twenty twenty-four four. Anyway, whatever, whichever it is, uh, motion been made. I think so, I think so.
The four ordinance.
Oh, I think resolution.
There were resolutions.
Yeah. Might be number one.
Yep, this is number one.
Okay, so, the motion has been made, proper seconded to, uh, suspend the rules, to go ahead and adopt, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one. An ordinance regulating open burning, or actually, any burning. So, motion been made, proper seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, say the same. Motion carried.
How many, how many pages is that?
Scott, motion to suspend rules and go to final.
Getting up, you wanted to take a copy and post that at the post office?
It's three pages, and then there's an attachment that's two pages.
Yeah, what did you say, Rick?
I thought, see, if you wanna post that at the post office, the people could, we'll be able to look at it and see what it is.
Oh, people's already calling, everybody's on their cell phone, now, watch the TV. No, that'd be tomorrow. Okay, that's done, so I.
Can I have that copy then?
I guess so.
Here.
Yeah, can you email me that?
So would that be twenty twenty-four dash one, or one dash twenty twenty-four?
Twenty twenty-four dash O one.
Dash O one. Yeah, it needs to be pulled in here too.
This is the office copy, why did you take mine?
Cause you wrote doodle on it.
Yeah.
That's an office, that ain't doodle, that's an office.
It's doodle.
Okay, uh. Resolution twenty twenty-four O two, let's talk about that real quick, Nita.
Okay, we can do that.
So we can, uh.
Kat, Kathy, she got it, uh, thanks to Janice for putting this together for us, and I'm gonna pass it over to Buddy now, we only have one copy of it.
I guess you want me to read it?
Please.
A resolution to establish permission to borrow from Edit Fund twenty-two zero nine. Whereas the Greensport Police Department has an opportunity to receive money from the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program, JAG. And whereas this grant agreement is entered into by and between, excuse me, the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute, the state, and Greensport Police Department, the grantee, and the town of Greensport, clerk treasurer, the fiscal agent at Cuba. Whereas the purpose of this grant agreement is to enable the state to award a grant of sixty-four thousand eight hundred dollars, the grant, to the grantee, for eligible costs of the services or project, the project, described in exhibits A and B of this grant agreement. And whereas the fiscal agent is responsible for ensuring that the grant funds are obligated, expended, and drawn down in conformity with the grant agreement, and whereas the fiscal agent shall borrow and return funds for this agreement in the year twenty twenty-four out of the Edit Fund twenty-two zero nine, not to exceed the amount of sixty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. Therefore, be it resolved this eleventh day of April twenty twenty-four, that the clerk treasurer of the town of Greensport, Indiana, shall be allowed to use Edit Fund twenty-two zero nine to provide requisite funding for this project.
Big word.
I got it though, requisite.
Yep, you did.
Requisite, I almost said requisite, I thought requisite. There it is. So now what?
No, we have.
I read it, what are you gonna do with it now, Nita?
Well, you guys have to approve it.
So I'll make a motion, we approve resolution.
Why do we have to borrow money from the Edit Fund, I don't understand that.
Cause you gotta pay for this stuff, and then we get reimbursed by the state.
And how much money does the Edit Fund have? It has enough to do that with. Up to sixty-four thousand? No, no, each time, each time they borrow it, then we get reimbursed for it, and then they can.
We're buying it in sections, remember, we're doing it in sections?
I think it's like twenty-two.
It's twenty-two thousand this time, it'd be.
And what's this money for?
The license plate readers.
LPR's license plate readers.
It's the JAG grant.
But it will, yeah, the JAG grant, it'll be put back in.
We have to pay, and then, when they get the cancelled check, they reimburse us that money.
Okay.
Then we can buy the next batch and use, well, use the same money repeatedly.
Yeah, over, over.
And any money we borrow has to be paid back by December, back to the fund.
Well, the sixty-four thousand threw me off because I thought, I didn't know we had that much money in Edit.
You should have it, Rick.
Now, that's why we gotta do it.
In sections, yes. Pay me back to borrow because we don't have that much.
So I have made the motion, correct, Janice? I'll make the motion, we accept this resolution?
Yes.
It's consecutive, both, uh, uh, motion been made and seconded properly for resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero two. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, say the same. Motion carried, thank you.
Go ahead and sign one.
I'd have to borrow your pen once, I can know.
It writes, sometimes that stops.
I just threw you one. It writes good.
This one, yeah, I'm gonna give you a good one.
Well, thank you.
We don't have money for pens, we can buy, uh, license plate readers.
I usually bring a different pens, I saw this one grabbed it, cause it looked nice and it did write.
I've seen it grant for pens.
See if we can slice some ink pens in those license plate readers.
No, but for next year though, you know, you guys wanna come up with some, some ideals that, like, uh, buying four of those radar signs next year for grants.
And I'm the, uh.
Thank you for bringing that up.
How about that?
Oh, the flocker.
While we're waiting and contemplating the humps, especially for Maine, because we're gonna be tearing it up or whatever. How big of a deal is it to move the, uh, slow down, you're going too fast? Cause remember when we first got those, we, I know it takes a special pole, but we, we had them where we could be moved around.
Well, we could take them off, but to move them on thirty-eight, it is a massive ordeal, because we have to go to the.
Well, I need to move them like on North Main.
So if it is on thirty-eight, we have to go to Id-?
No, yeah, Pearl, I wouldn't move it anywhere on Pearl, but Yasi Street, that's where you guys.
Yeah, that's where I'm talking, yeah.
Yeah, South Main.
We just, we gotta get another pole for them.
How, how much are the poles?
Expensive.
Expensive.
I don't remember.
They're not like a million dollar or half million?
What is the, what is the, that, are you gonna just use like a four by four and bolt it to the concrete?
No, we'd use, we'd use a pole and bolt, we'd use a regular street pole that has a, a base, depending on what it's...
Yeah, the base is what I'm talking about, the four by four boat base, or six by six base, bolt it to the ground?
Probably a six by six with the weight of those things.
But Rick was gonna say if we could get liners like we had before and put on these streets.
From Purdue.
Yeah, that'd be great, because all we done was just put insurance on them.
Right, but, I mean, it, my question was, how big of an ordeal is it to move the one off thirty-eight nearby this bridge coming down the hill and put it on Main Street for a couple of weeks, and then move it back if so desired?
It's not that bad a mountain on the pole. But it's been several years since I put it up, so I really don't remember how I even bolted on that pole.
Well, I bet you look at it, you'll figure it out.
Yes.
Has it?
Yes.
I would've guessed maybe two.
Two, that's several.
Okay, several, I felt several was four.
Three or more, Q's three, seven's four, you're right. Hairs two, or a couple.
It could've been four because I've slept many times since then.
Okay.
Okay, well, that, that's...
I, I don't remember how...
I was just looking at a, a, a temporary fix, maybe, to pacify residents that are concerned about people flying them down Main Street right there. Figure we can do that for a couple of weeks.
Listen, if you want me to do the hot mix and make some humps, I'd do that. But understand, we're gonna, we're gonna tear them up when we do the road. But it may slow them down for now, so, I don't care.
And it's gonna be well for these roads, isn't it?
It probably.
What do you think?
Before we do Main Street.
Uh, how, how much?
It probably gonna take about two and a half, three tons.
For?
For one hump.
One hump?
Yeah.
And we, how much can we haul in our dump trailer?
Three ton.
Three ton, so a dump trailer?
Yeah.
I don't think you're gonna need that much.
To stretch across Maine out here?
You gotta stretch it all across.
I guess, I'm, yeah, well, where I, that might be true. I'm thinking about a ten, twelve foot line.
Talking about, yeah, a hump.
What's, what's the cost on that, though?
I'm gonna guess probably about seventy-five, seventy-eight dollars a ton.
So, two hundred and fifty bucks?
And we need probably two, right?
Two and a half, probably.
No, I mean, two, two sets.
Well, I would just do one, one, try one and see how we, see how it is. And then, then you guys are gonna know, but, because like I said, we've been trying to get this done for several years. We can just get one hump, huh?
I'd say you would wanna put one this side, north of the curve, to have a couple hundred feet, or a hundred feet over front of Ruby's little house, and then one...
Halfway up.
By his, by Scott's house.
Or between you and...
But then also, we gotta get signs ordered.
That could be done for like, what, under four hundred bucks?
But then you gotta put signs in for the hump.
Gotta put the, we gotta put hump signs up. And we can go back, be able to paint, paint them yellow.
But if you're gonna tear it up and do it, why don't you get some deep ad?
Because this is, we're not gonna be able, we're not gonna be able to strip that road till we get some extra money.
That, that might be a couple more years from now.
No, I thought you were gonna get some machinery and stuff to do it with.
No, 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 no.
We won't get it done that fast.
Of course, he was going along with some machinery.
No, this, no, it's not all of it.
We don't have the money for the asphalt.
You're gonna spend, you're gonna probably spend ten, ten grand in asphalt.
Yeah, we don't...
So this could be a temp fix. I mean, that's all it's gonna be.
And you'll get an idea of how, how these speed dump, speed bumps, do they really work? Are people slowing down?
We've already had an experience with it.
They weren't on a thoroughfare like Main Street, though.
They worked an hour ago.
Well...
Till they got broke.
Right, but I mean, that, that can happen anywhere, though.
If we did that right now, I would, I'm not a betting man, but I would bet that we're not gonna be doing any more plowing this year.
No.
And that's gonna be a plus, so that means we probably got the whole summer now, till October, November timeframe to, to experiment with it, see how it works out.
We probably need to do something, because we got a lot of complaints out there.
Well, let's, you guys just say, you say do it, and we'll, we'll figure out how to make it happen.
You know, you can, you can get those signs that have, have it on both sides. Put up one, one sign on each side, step it up four, or you just put up two signs?
Two signs.
So, I don't know that we need to make a motion, but if you guys can figure that into your schedule, we'd appreciate it, and get that underway, maybe. And, you know, Scott's off weekends, I'm off.
Can't get hot mix on the weekends. Not right now, they're not...
They're not even open yet, are they?
I think they're, I think they are. I'll have to get, make a phone call and find out.
Well, that old boy that drove the truck, kept coming back with the truck, and come out of Carver's Hill, he's the one you get a hold of, he'll hook us up. He's a good one. All right, Tim?
So you just go on the speed bumps, that's what you call them.
Humps, humps.
Humps, H U P S.
Make it a little wider, that way if they jump it, they're gonna drop their car in.
We're ready for it. Oh, you already got started, don't you?
What is Granger?
Granger.
Controllers.
They have, uh, parts.
Say again, Brenda?
Maintenance, supplies, parts, repair parts.
Parts, repair parts.
Cellex, Leonardo, Vender?
Leonardo is here, uh, his new, uh, license plate readers.
We don't use a lot of Granger, but we're doing some things. We had to replace the ventilation fans out there, too.
You're gonna make a motion?
So we're gonna take a pretty big hit next month with those repairs.
I think the hit's...
Just trying to move it along, it's almost...
They did already?
She's written off there.
Okay.
Wayne County Sales, what, what do we buy there for almost a thousand?
We bought several things.
You all are.
Could say.
It just says repairs, and then L R and S.
Nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
And then another eighty bucks. No, just guessing what, what it was.
Four ten to twenty-four.
I had to back and look. There was something big on there they bought.
There was, um...
The tool of some sort.
It was, we twisted my impact off for one.
This is very good, right?
Yes.
We gotta make a motion, prove it for us. Make a motion, we accept the warrants for the money we spent last month, or we owe from last month?
And payroll.
And payroll?
Yeah.
One second. Motion been made and proper seconded to accept warrants, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say the same. Motion carried, thank you, thank you, thank you.
You did us a pretty good deal.
What is Vernors? I know, I think you use that.
Well, that was, uh, ginger ale.
I wonder, is it good?
I like, it's got a little bit more bite than most of them.
Yeah, I don't like the flat ones, I like the heavy duty ones.
Yeah, I usually get vernors, because, well, that's what's in the machine at work anyways. But I like it because it's got more bite.
Yeah, we got a great price on tires, though.
So that's seven hundred and fifty dollars? I'm like, the tires on my Toyota just...
Yeah, you probably don't get them for that.
Oh, tires are awful, they're hard.
We, uh, that was government pricing, we went through on them.
And we do that at Greens Fork, correct? Okay, anybody got any question about anything before we adjourn the meeting? Nita? Brenda? Go on, what?
So we did say we are gonna check into trying to get those humps done, then? Yeah, that'll appease them, I think.
Make a motion, we adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made, proper seconded, adjourned the meeting, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you don't want to, say the same. Motion carried. Kill it.